Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the New Jersey School Board of Education held for the purpose of discussing the superintendent search process. In compliance with chapter 2.11, all tonight at 7:00, the minutes of this meeting was advertised on the Morris County Record. How does the agenda of this meeting work? I'll hopefully post it and available to the board. Mrs. Borden. Mr. Brandman.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana. Mr. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mrs. No Wiccan. We have a call. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of our God, in the name of liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming today. As you may know, Dr. Angelou has accepted the position in the different school district after the end of this school year, which has prompted our board to call a special meeting to learn about the superintendent search process because I think most of us are new board members and have not gone through such a process. And we invited Charlene Peterson, our New Jersey School Boards Association field service representative, and I'm sorry I told her to introduce her colleague when she comes up, but she's going to present on the superintendent search process. You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Do you think I need it or not?
Your role.
Okay. I think I'm good. Just firstly, wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight and so this really is just information, just to share with the group what this process looks like, what a board goes through, when it's undertaking a search, what kind of questions it might have, what kind of decisions the board has to make. So just to kind of take everyone through a process. But before I get started on that, I really wanted to take a minute, well first to introduce my colleague Kelly Mitchell, so Kelly is here assisting. But also I notes today, went online just to kind of look to see like what, how many credits your board had and noticed that Barry just became a certified board leader through New Jersey School Boards. So it is the highest level of certification that New Jersey School Boards has. We have four different levels and the highest level, and there are not that many people in the state who are able to accomplish that. So he had to earn 60 credits by taking various different classes. We have county meetings, he had to attend 10 of those, go to our workshop in Atlantic City, had to do that three times, take five different statewide regional programs and pass an exam. So he was able to accomplish all of those. So will be recognized at the Morris County Spring Meeting, but just, you know, wanted to mention what a great accomplishment that is. And, you know, the board itself has always been dedicated to training and so I think that that's, you know, a really important example, you know, as we kind of, you know, talk about lifelong learners and wanting our staff and our students and everyone else to be learning, it's important that the board sets that example as well. So like I said, I'm going to take you through just the process of a superintendent search and so from the board's perspective, you are welcome to stop at any time, ask questions at any time, and like I said, just kind of take you through a general process. So when we, you know, when we think about hiring a superintendent, you know, from the board's perspective, when you do go through training, we always talk about the fact that this is one of the most important decisions that you make as a board. And the reason is because of the, you know, the wide impact that the superintendent has, not only on your, on your school, but they're also the educational leader of your community. So it's important then that the person that's representing your community, you know, is someone that you can, you know, that you're also proud of. And so from the board's perspective, then, you know, making sure that this is a very thoughtful process. And, you know, if we think about too, the way the district runs, you know, we always tell the board, you only have one employee and that's the superintendent, and then everyone else in the district reports to the superintendent. So the board is legally charged with this process of hiring as one employee. We don't have any board members, right, that have a relative working in the district, correct? Okay, if that were the case, you couldn't be able to participate in the process, but good to know that everyone is able to participate. So just, just kind of put this up here because this is kind of how people's faces look sometimes when you think that you are faced with a superintendent search and it's kind of an unknown, not sure what you're getting yourself into, what it's like, how the process works. So just kind of want to eat your fears and say, we don't need to look like this, we're gonna, you know, that you'll have all the help and support that you need. So first, I wanted to start out recognizing that when your board, you know, first learned that it had a vacancy, you know, when the superintendent announces resignation, so the district is required to have a superintendent. So your vacancy is sometime in August, right, I think? So board has some, a couple of choices. And so these definitions kind of come from the state, the kind of essentially saying that when a board has a vacancy, it's, so I'll start with kind of the bottom and saying, you know, a permanent superintendent, that would be, your choice would be to hire someone permanently to fill that vacancy. And so what the state requirement is, is that that superintendent's tenure in your district is their contract. And the minimum contract that a board can offer a superintendent is three years and the maximum is five years. The next option that a board has is that you could fill that seat with an interim superintendent. So usually, you know, someone who's retired, and now that they're retired, you know, can do this work. So the way it's set up through the states is they can initially stay here for one year and then if need be, you can apply to becoming superintendent and ask for like a second year if you want. But they can't stay longer than two years. And really, that's more because of the pension system because once they're retired, they're into the pension system, so not able to stay in any one place longer than two years. The other choice would be an acting superintendent, and that is somebody that is currently working in the district, who holds the required certificate to be able to sit in that seat. Now, in the, in the technical definition of an acting superintendent, you can only use that when your superintendent will be out on leave. But the county superintendent has been a little more flexible in saying, hey, like if you have somebody in place who has the certificate and your superintendent's leaving, instead of just the option of someone being retired, you know, you also may be able to consider that option of someone acting whose in-house.
Charlene asked, is there a time bound on that acting superintendent?
It's not, there's, it's not time bound, but it's usually just considered to be a stopgap of your, either, you know, in the process, you're looking and, you know, maybe you haven't found somebody yet, it's not considered to be a long-term solution.
Another question, did you say max of five years? Because previous contract would be longer and our current superintendent, did they change that?
No, it's always been five years, but you perhaps probably, you can go in and either like renegotiate that contract, like, so, so that's perhaps what it's just. Because one of the things that happened too is when the salary caps were in place and then they were lifted, that a lot of boards went in and renegotiated the superintendent's contract as he's old. So that's probably what, what they did as well. So it's always been that, that three to five years. So one of the things or one of the ways that that also becomes a factor is that the superintendent's contract is based on also the, kind of the requirement that it has to end on June 30th. So in order for it to be like a full, say, three years, you have to start on July 1st. You know, then you can go four years or five years. Let's say in your case, say in this case, say if the person starts August 1st, you still have to stay within three years, five years, and it still has to end on June 30th. So in order to stay in that three and five years and end on June 30th, now the minimum contract then could be three years and 11 months. Because otherwise, you'd be two years and 11 months and that's not within the three years. So it can either be, would have to be three years and 11 months, and the maximum would be four years and 11 months, just because of that three to five year legal requirement and also the legal requirement that it has to end on June 30th. So some of the other considerations as, you know, we have to look at the timing and look at like, what do we want to do? How quickly do we want to do it? Which option do we want to select? You know, some of the things that boards think about is like the number of transitions. You know, like sometimes I'll go into a district and they'll say, Charlene, like you've had nine superintendents in the past three or four years or something. You know, so like every time you're using an interim and then you have, you know, hire a permanent, that's like another transition that the staff and the school community is going through. So sometimes boards will take that into consideration. Sometimes you also would look at, you know, the scope of work that's either unfinished or ongoing and if you're like in the middle of something or got something big coming up, again, you may say like, would we benefit from perhaps an interim who maybe has done this work before and might be able to lead us through that before we bring a permanent person in? Or is it better if someone's, if this is going to be like a multi-year project, bring the person in now and have them get started? So those will be conversations that the board will need to have in terms of that timing and looking at where you are now. And then also like looking at the time of year sometimes, so depending on, you know, when your vacancy, like you have to think about like, how does that impact when the school year starts? How does that impact like, you know, when the board turns over in November, like, you know, after the November election? So other factors may also go into your decision or the way that you look at this. So all things that the board has to take into consideration as it's making that determination, do we want to do an interim and acting for a permanent superintendent? These would be some of the things that do we be considering or looking at in making that decision. So I had mentioned, so in terms of the requirements, so the requirement that the state has for someone to hold the title of superintendent is that they have to possess a school administrator certificate. Or a certificate of eligibility means that you have done all the work, you've done all the, you know, the schooling and the requirements for it, you just haven't sat in the seat yet. So that if you do get that first job and sit in the seat, then you have someone to mentor you. You know, New Jersey requires that the person has to be a resident and if they're not, they have to move here within a year, then three to five year contract. You know, the, the Morris County Executive County Superintendent also has to approve the contract before the board can pass a resolution to hire the person. It's just kind of another set of eyes looking over the contract to make sure that, you know, it's reasonable. And then when the state did take the salary caps away, you know, when they were in place, it pretty much said, you know, when Governor Christie was the governor and said, you know, no one could make more money than he did. So that was what the cap was and then it was tiered based on the size of your district. So then when the cap went away, kind of the language then that the state uses now is that the compensation has to be subject to comparability requirements. So what that means or what the language is, the state defining comparability requirements, is that it has to be comparable to similarly credentialed and experienced administrators in the region with similar enrollment, achievement challenges and grade spans. So just kind of looking and saying, okay, like what are the other super, you know, like what are the other K-8 superintendents in Morris County making? So just kind of, you know, looking at it from that perspective. So one of the things that, when the caps were in place and you couldn't go above it for salary, the state had put into place the opportunity to give superintendents miracles. So when the caps went away, they didn't take the miracles away, but we don't see them very often in contracts anymore, essentially because the payment for them is not pensionable. So if I can have the money, I would rather have the money in my salary where it's going toward my pension rather than giving it to me as a miracle where I'm getting the money but it's not pensionable. So that's why we don't see it that often. An interim superintendent is usually contracted on a daily rate, so you would like take an annual salary and the state uses 260 days usually to determine a daily rate. And then for the acting superintendent, it would be what, you know, if it was somebody internal, it would be whatever agreement they'd already proposed. So I, you know, mentioned the comparability with Morris County salaries, so just kind of wanted to show you what that looks like. And this is data from, it's a year old now, so because we don't have this year's user-friendly budget information yet, it'll be out the next month. So this is last year's. So San Morris County, their overall average for superintendent salary was 211,000. Just looking at the pre-K-8s, it was about 193,000. So just to kind of give you an idea of what that, what that comparability requirement might look like.
Sorry, can I ask?
Sure.
Is that requirement, is that the county superintendent's? Where does that come in? Is that all those in the board or is it part of the, of the board?
So, so you will submit a contract to the county superintendent with a salary on it. So like you will have done your homework, done your research, then you would, you know, enter into contract negotiations with the candidate and then submit that contract to the county superintendent with kind of a cost analysis that says, look, this is where everybody else is and this is, you know, this is where we gave this salary. And then they'll either come back and, I haven't seen enough, but every month or so while, say, you know, if that's too high, like go back and renegotiate again or, so just they're, you know, they're that set of eyes that has to look at, you can't pass the resolution to hire the person until they, they say okay. Based on the contract about you submitted. So, so now from the board's perspective, you're like, okay, here we are, we found ourselves in this situation, what are we going to do? How are we going to get started? So started out a very good way, just by getting training on the process right away and invite your community in to come and have an understanding along with you. So if we look at the process, you know, that we'll have to think about a budget for, right? That, and we've seen superintendent search processes can go anywhere from 4,000 to I've seen it go to 25,000, you know, kind of depending if you use like a bigger national firm. There could be additional costs for advertising, background checks. So those would be, you know, some of the types of things you'd have to take into consideration from a cost perspective. Thinking about the scope, I mean, it's not that usual for a board to go outside of New Jersey in terms of the scope of looking for a search and attracting candidates, but it is an option available to a board. You know, who will help guide you through this process? With yourself? You want to have us as New Jersey School Boards? Is your state association assisting you through the process? Would you like to hire a search consultant? So those are choices that you have. And then from the board's perspective, what would you like to be your level of participation as you go through this process? Do you look who'd like the whole board to be involved throughout the entire process? I mean, that's typically what we recommend, just because it is such an important decision, that it is ideal to have everyone involved in the process as much as possible. I mean, sometimes boards will find themselves in a situation that maybe some members due to their work or travel schedules or things can't, and maybe some boards will start out with just a committee getting the process started, but then the whole board would need to join in at some point in the process. So as a board, you would kind of need to come to an understanding of how your board would like to be involved in this process. So now, as, as we look at the timeline of a search, so there are some things that, actually quite a few things, that are really outside of the board's control in terms of how long are these things going to take. So one of them is that the person that you hire has to give notification to their current district. Usually they have a contract that says, we have to give you this many days notice. So pretty much the standard in education, at least for, you know, kind of in the management level, is 60 days. And if they're already a sitting superintendent, it might be more closer to 90 days. So you would expect that, you know, so they, their contract can't start until they can start. So automatically, you have at least that 60, maybe 90 day window built into the process. Usually the application window from the time you post your ad until the time people can, you know, be applying for your job, that window is usually open for 30 days. And that's just to kind of to get the advertising out, get the word out, give people time to complete the application. So that's usually like a 30 day period. And then usually during that 30 days, then is when you're also communicating with the stakeholders, talking to the staff, talking to the community, talking to the students, kind of finding out what everyone, you know, what everyone would like in the next superintendent. So that's kind of all taking place during that time period. That the county superintendents review the contract, they are entitled to 20 days. You usually have seen it come back in two days, three days, you know, they don't usually take that long, but they say, this is what we're owed. If we choose to do it less than that, I mean, we can. There's usually three rounds of interviews and each round is usually at least a week apart or so just to give the candidates time. Like, like it's going to take usually a couple nights of each round and then, you know, and then the next week, usually a couple nights. And so, so all of those things are kind of all into play in the calendar. And then depending on once the board is ready, they've selected someone, it's gone to the county superintendent, you got the contract back, and let's say your next board meeting's not for another three weeks. You may decide then that you want to call a special meeting then to make this appointment because that person won't resign from their current job until they are sure that you have voted to appoint them, right? Like you're not going to take that risk. So they won't resign until after you've appointed them and then that's when the clock starts for their 60 or 90 days or whatever it is that they have. So one of the things we say that as much as we look at this timeline, you know, and think about all the impacts it can have, just continue to emphasize that the single most important thing is picking the right person and going through the process and not settling and not saying like, you know, oh my goodness, like, you know, we're almost out of time, you know, forget all of that. Like this is such an important decision that you need to make sure that you are selecting the right person and that's what has to drive the timeline. So this is, I just kind of took a general calendar and kind of plugged in all of the things I just talked about and let's say, you know, let's say, what if we were going to start here in April? So usually the process starts with a beginning meeting with the board to talk about, you know, the calendar, talk about what's going to be in the ad, talk about what the board's, you know, what the board's interests are, what you want to see in a superintendent, kind of start the process that way. Then like I said, then the ad is usually open for a month, people are applauding, advertising's taking place, getting input from your stakeholders. Then usually you would sit down, then once the ad closes and then go together as a group, go through applicants and the board determine who the board would like to bring in for first round board interviews. Then you'd have second round interviews. Typically, there's a finalist interview that you would narrow it down to a couple people and then bring them back in, then start the reference checking and the vetting, the contract negotiations. Then, you know, hopefully, then this is all worked, we get to the point then that we're ready to approve someone and then like you say, a couple of months later, that person would start. So that's kind of as we, you know, would lay all those. So this would all be adjusted based on, you know, when, it really sometimes comes down to kind of saying, when do you want somebody in place and then work backwards?
Charlene, do you have a question?
Sure.
Practically, it's going to be somewhere in the summer because if you were to hire somebody, have you seen in the past where people basically bring that 60 day requirement potentially like if they're in the summer time or you don't see that happen?
Um, so it can happen, but so where it, so some of it depends on what the position is that the person has that you're hiring them from. So if I have a position, like maybe my district can buy without me or maybe if I'm not the superintendent, then maybe the superintendent that district will say, you know what, you know, go, we'll figure it out here or, you know, I've got someone I can slide into your spot here, so I'll go ahead and waive it. I mean, we can't, you can't guarantee it.
Yeah. I'm seeing, you see that often, like?
So it depends.
Twenty percent of the time, half the time, just curiously?
It, it depends on the position. So it would, it would happen more if they're not already a sitting superintendent. If it's a sitting superintendent, then now that board has to get started on a search and this is their, you know, so this is their first taste of it and they're going to need some time. So it really, that's what will be a factor.
I have a question on the next slide. Is that the timeline? That one? Yeah, so we're conducting final rounds. So I was just wondering from your experience in having health districts through this sort of timeline that's close to summer, like, I mean, I just wondering how important is it if you like get all those interviews done in June and like what happens? What do you see in the summer? Like I just worry about the slowdown of considerations and.
No, I mean, those are all, those are all factors. I mean, you know, the hard part is too that, you know, the, the input sessions, like, you know, your staff are not going to be here to talk to, your parents are not going to be here to talk to, so you also have to think about that too. So yeah, all of those things would need to play into your timeline, you know. So, you know, I said that it's important that the board also has to have conversations about where you see the school going. Because one of the things that we find is that like, we need to have or be clear about as a group what our vision is, what our vision is for where the, the school, you know, district needs to go. Because a lot of times what helps kind of separate or what makes someone be the right match for us is someone whose vision matches our vision, someone who has kind of that same sense of where this district needs to go in order to, you know, best serve the needs of the community and best needs to serve the students. So we would, you know, so you would have conversations about that, have conversations about like what are the things that you would like to see in the next superintendent? You know, and we're also asked too, you know, like as much as this has to be your, you know, you're funding to find the right person, your school also has to be the right person, the right fit for them, right? That, you know, a superintendent is invested in your community, they spend a lot of time in your school. So they're going to want to know or have an understanding about what makes this a great community, what makes this a great place to live and work. You know, what are some of the issues that I'm going to be facing if I were to come here? So as a group, we need to have a common understanding of what those things are, recognizing that it's important that this be a two-way partnership, a relationship that's right for both partners. So one of the, you know, I had mentioned then that this is the board's responsibility, right? That the board is legally charged with hiring the superintendent. So where this kind of then takes us is, okay, well, this is the board's job. If the board is the one sitting in the interviews, if the board is the one, you know, going through this process, recognizing that you can't do it alone, right? So as much as I talked about what that vision is, what we want to see in a superintendent, what are those characteristics and qualities that will make that person be the right match for your school and your school district, you can't do that without talking to your community, without talking to your staff, without having a, you know, without gathering input. But, you know, in the past, sometimes groups used to be part of the hiring process sometimes, would be part of the interviews. But now that times have changed and superintendents don't have tenure anymore, so the confidentiality now is extremely important. If I'm a sitting superintendent, I don't want my board knowing I'm looking, I don't want my community knowing I'm looking for a job, I don't want my staff knowing I'm looking for a job, I've got a family to feed, I don't want, and to do anything will jeopardize my job. So often I, you know, I will get questions saying, okay, Charlene, like can you guarantee me that there's not going to be anyone else sitting there other than the board? Because the board is the only group that is legally bound to confidentiality through the code of ethics. No one else has any consequences to confidentiality, breaking confidentiality, anything like that. So now you, so now you're faced with a position of what do we need to do to make sure that we are attracting the very best people we possibly can for our students and recognizing that that, part of that comes with them having a confidential process to ensure that the very best people will apply for our position. So then from the board's perspective. So then from the board's perspective, we know then that we, like, we interact with the superintendent in a way that's different than the way that the staff interacts, interacts differently than what the students need, what the parents need, what the community needs. So the only way that you can be, have this be a successful process is for you to understand what all of those needs are, and then to look at all of the applications through the lens of, I'm not only looking at these applicants through what I think is important, but what did the staff tell us they need, what did the parents tell us are important to them, what did the community say they really need in their next educational leader? And then we need to take all of those things into consideration in doing that. So typically then, the way that we, we find out those things is through making sure then that we have taken the time to have everyone feel heard. And we do that through listening sessions where, you know, typically then, you know, the consultant schedules time then to make sure that your community is, has the opportunity and staff and students have the opportunity to be heard. And I also think it's important to explain the process to them as well, like, to kind of go through a brief, like, presentation like this so that they see the process and then can also provide input. You know, and I know that, like, your community was well represented at the Mount Lake search, that would, there was a lot of group and township community members that came to those parent input sessions and community input sessions. So, yeah, I know that this is, you know, your, your community continues to demonstrate as there's so many here now, you know, how much they value education, and so, you know, so it really is important that we're taking the time to make sure that, you know, that everyone's voices are heard. So we would do that, you know, in person, through a survey, through, through virtual sessions, trying to do as much as possible to allow people to hear. So this is, this is an example I wanted to show you, that once the board reaches the point of putting an ad together to kind of help, this is just a sample, but just, I wanted to make the point about the words required and the words preferred, so that when the ad is done, you'll have a clearer understanding of the meaning of those words. So when we say that something's required, it means that whoever's applying for the job has to have it, and if they don't have it, we can't interview them because we said it's required. So like, we know that that certificate has to be required because the state says it's required, but there can be other things that we think are important. If we say that something's preferred, then that means saying, you have it and I don't and we both applied, you're a better match for the position than I am, but that doesn't mean that you can't interview them, you can still consider. So, the more things you make are required, the tighter your, Cass, you know, the tighter the net is right from the beginning, the more things are preferred, then you're, you know, then you've expanded the net a little bit and you might tight-knit, you know, them through the interview process. But there may be things right away, like, as people are applying, like, in this example, someone said, you know, in the example said, you know what, they need to have some kind of experience as a manager in a school, either as a principal, as, you know, central office, a sitting superintendent, in this case, in this, a board said, you know, three years experience doing that is required, in order for someone to be successful, so that's what you have to think about, what does someone need to have, you know, done and required to be successful in this position? So it may be that they need to have been a principal, or they need to have elementary experience, or K-8 experience, or whatever thing, other things you think are important, kind of having that conversation then about what you'd like to make required and what you'd like to make preferred, but just making sure we have an understanding of what the difference is between those two. So in terms of advertising, there's really not much paid advertising, at least too much anymore. I mean, you know, it used to be you'd open the Sunday section of the Star Ledger, right, and there'd be all the educational stuff, and it's really not there anymore. So, you know, you pretty much can just, on our website, you know, you can, your ad can be there, and then there's other professional organizations, like the Business Administrator Organization that John belongs to, there's a superintendent's, um, and, you know, association, a principal's association, so your ad can go in all of those places, and just different, different areas to advertise. Like, in our particular, in New Jersey School Board's particular case, I mean, like, we have a database of people, so, like, they're, I'm sure each consultant would have their own way of finding and attracting candidates to bring them to your position perhaps without having to pick any. So in terms of then, so what information from the board's perspective would you like to, you know, receive on all of the candidates? And so this is one of the things that, you know, again, for you to consider and say, you know, like, what do you need to know is, as we're looking at these candidates, what information do we need? So, so these are some of the things that probably will consider, does the person have an application that they need to fill out? A resume, a cover letter, and a lot of times we say the application's important because if my resume is four pages and yours is one page, you're not getting the same sense of information about both of us, but if we all have to fill out the same application, you then have, you know, some more standardized information. Providing that school administrative certificate, sometimes requiring transcripts, and it's usually, in order to have that school administrative certificate, you have to have a master's degree. So a lot of times if you ask for transcripts, it's, okay, what's beyond that master's degree? Like, we have doctor, the last performance evaluation, and then, and references. So those are the types of information that could be available to you for, on every single applicant, so that you, you know, it's important to make an informed decision and have as much information as you can, and it's important that the board has that information and has that information on every applicant. So then, we're gonna, so now we've, so we've got our, we've got people applying, we have, you know, gotten, we've talked to all of our stakeholders, we've gotten some good feedback from what's important to them, and so now we're gonna start seeing some things surfacing of saying, these are the things that are important in our district, these are the things that people said someone needs to have to be successful here, kind of determining some criteria then that are specific to your district based on the feedback that we received. So then we know then that that's gonna help us when we're looking at the applications then, to look at them through that lens and look at them from that criteria that has surfaced. So I mentioned that there's typically three rounds of interviews, so this is just a sense of what that usually looks like. So in a normal pool or so, you'll normally get about, I don't know, 40, 45 applicants, something like that, that will typically apply for a job, a superintendent position. So usually, just, again, we're speaking in general terms, a board would bring in eight to 10 people in that first round interview, and usually it's a very structured interview. I'm just, like, trying to answer the question, I didn't, I won't have enough information yet to know whether I can see you as my next superintendent, but I just need to know, do I wanna see you again? Do I wanna learn more about you? Did you show me enough that I wanna bring you back again? So that's what we're really trying to learn in the first round. So, as I said, it's very structured, so like, you would ask question one, you'll ask question two, you'll ask question three, and we typically don't deviate from that in the first round, so that, like, let's say, if you move forward and I don't, I can't say, well, you gotta ask easier questions than I do, you had, you know, an easier opportunity, then we all had the same exact opportunity. So then, typically then, you would cut that eight to 10 and kind of cut that pool in half, and then the second round then is usually longer, and you spend more time with the person, and then this is when you start doing your digging, you can start asking, like, you might have some questions you wanna ask everyone, but then you might just have specific questions that, you know, might be relevant to me. Maybe I had a lot of high school experience on my resume and not a lot of elementary experience, so you might need to dig deeper with me and find out more about that. So you would be able to do that, you can kind of do back and forth where you can, you know, if you ask a question and it triggers something in your mind, then you can ask that question. You might also give them some kind of a task to do, like, ahead of time, and say, okay, like, here's a scenario about what's going on in the district, or, you know, come back and present to us or share with us, how would you solve this as our superintendent? You also might have some, some files or some additional information that you might want them to upload, like, maybe saying, you know, share with us, you know, say a letter you wrote when a parent was upset about something. Show us a letter, or show us, you know, a letter of how you responded to a crisis situation, kind of get some more general information about, about them. So those are all things then that you would be going through in the second round, so like I said, this is where you're doing your digging, so that by the end of the second round, you should be able to answer the question then, do I wanna see you, or could I see you in this chair? Could I see you being our next superintendent? And you might say that answer yes to a couple people. So then if that's the case then, then you would have that finalist round where you would have them come back again, and in this case, it really depends, like, what kind of information you might need, like, in, typical thing sometimes is to share with us what your, say, like, what your 90-day entry plan would be if you were a new superintendent, and, you know, what would that look like, how would you acclimate yourself to our, to our district? Sometimes, you know, you can say to boards, even, sometimes even at the end of round two, if there was somebody that was just like a shining star and was heads and tail above everyone else, I still say, even if you just bring them back for the flutter round, you need to have that time sometimes just to make sure you made the right choice, sit them at the table with you, have a conversation with them, but just continue to do that due diligence and continue to make sure that, you know, you're confirming that you've made the right choice. So then, assuming we're just moving along here, and that everything that we were able to select a finalist, so at this point, we don't call them your new superintendent or your next superintendent yet, we call them one finalist that we're moving forward with, because we still then want to go through the vetting process, go through the reference checks, and make sure that that is all, that that's all good, if we can, and so, again, this would depend on their position, but if we can, we'd like them to come in and spend a day in, and spend a day in the district, and, you know, maybe have an hour or two, like, meet with some parents, meet with some students, meet with the administration, meet with the staff, and just kind of spend a day in the district, just so kind of other people have the chance to kind of lay eyes on the person, kind of get to know the person, talk to them a little bit.
Just, that seems like it conflicts with the confidentiality.
And that's why I said, and that's why I said, it depends. So, like, if, if your finalist is a superintendent, the odds are you may not have that option. If your finalist is a principal, and that principal superintendent knows that they're looking and is supporting the fact that they're gonna get a chance to move up the career ladder, then that they may, you know, that they may be able to do that. So that's a great point, yeah, it completely depends on when and if that person is able to give up their confidentiality. And then if that all goes well, then we would do, you know, do contract negotiations, present the contract to the county superintendent, and then, you know, 60 to 90 days later, the person would start. So, and then, you know, we love also, like, hope that, say, that the process shouldn't stop there, then it's really important, once they get on board, to have like a transition workshop, come in and say, you know, let's talk about communication protocols, let's talk about how we want you to, to let us know things, let's talk about, like, you know, what are your non-negotiables, these are our non-negotiables, and, you know, like, we really need to help make this person be successful once they're here, so how can we support you? You know, what are some, what are some partners in the community that we think it's important that you, you know, reach out to these people, make sure you, you know, you start forming good relationships with these groups, and, so do what we can to help the new superintendent be successful. So these would be things that, it would be great to have those conversations, like, right at the start, so. Dave, that was the last slide? Yep, it's not moving, so, just wanna see if the board had any other questions for me?
So when we're talking about listening sessions and surveying and getting information from stakeholders, like, so how does that information trickle up to the board, at least through the New Jersey School Board's process? And, just 'cause I went through recently Mount Lake, we were, I believe we were not supposed to sit in on the stakeholder opening, right? Like, it was supposed to allow the community freedom and to share thoughts.
Yes.
And we farm issues.
Yep, I mean, and so, and again, that would be a choice, but it is usually the choice of saying, you know what, like, this is the, the community and the staff's time to say what they wanna say, so I think if, if this, say, using Mount Lake as an example, if we're present, we come, welcome everyone, say, you know, we're, we're happy that you're here, your feedback is important to us, and then say, I wanna meet you, in her hands, that I'm gonna go, and you are free to, you know, to say what you wanna say, and then do kind of like a summary report that allows the board to get all of the feedback and get all of the information, and then the same thing with the surveys. I mean, the surveys are, where we stay in New Jersey School Board's case, it's through our survey monkey account, so a lot of times staff and other people sometimes will ask me, like, no one's, like, no one knows who I am, right? Like, no, that this is our, our survey account, so again, the board is just seeing then the responses, but not, obviously, you know, not knowing where it came from, so, making sure the board is informed and that, making sure that the community and the staff, and, and in this, in one of this recent search I did, it was the first time that I've ever sat down with, like, eighth grade students before, so it was kind of an interesting process to sit with a group of kids, have some pizza, and kind of talk about what they wanted in a superintendent, but they're extremely, like, insightful, like, and Kelly was with me, and every time we leave with the kids, we're always like so impressed in the things they come up with and the things that they say, and, so it's really great to be able to give them the opportunity as well to be part of this process. Any others?
From a timing standpoint, you mentioned that, you know, we give the feedback to everyone, but at the same time, I think we have the superintendent, I guess we post it, right, at that point? Does that happen before? Do we get feedback from the community, then incorporate that into the posting? Or do we post and then kind of at the same time, we're getting feedback from the staff, that the community, et cetera?
So it can go either way, and again, it depends how much time you have. So sometimes we just look at the posting, that is saying, like, this is the very minimum of what we need to get you in the door, and then we take the feedback, then we gather all the feedback and get that information, say, okay, we got you in the door, now what? So now then, that feedback would help drive, like, who's gonna move forward, who are we gonna bring in for an interview? Who's gonna move forward to the next round? What kind of questions are we gonna ask? So it really drives the process from there, so it can go either way, so, and again, it depends on the time, but for the most part, they usually will start out with just the ad, like I said, it's just the basics of boom, 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 this is what you need to get in the door, and then, you know, gather the feedback to fill out that profile, so that when you look at, like I said, so when you look at the applications, you're looking at through that wider lens.
One other, not looking to start out with anything, but you did have a really good bullet in the bottom that said, don't let, with the timeline drive the appointment, right? This is a critical high. If we go through this process, we say, if we just don't find that fit, I guess we, you go back to the drawing board at that point, and then, I'm assuming you would change, you had the sample of posting, right, so it would have, maybe we change our preferreds and, you know, is that sort of the next step there?
Yep, that's exactly, one of my colleagues who's doing a search, that's exactly what just happened.
Okay.
So, they, they got through the whole process and just decided, and they made it, like, really restrictive, and then they saw that there were some good people that perhaps they were missing out on, so now they're going back out again and changing, changing the criteria and hoping to see if that will, you know, attract. that will, you know, attract.
So in your experience, I mean, we're on a timeline to be affected by SWEAR and other rules. We kind of working pressed than usual or is this sort of what you see in the state?
It seems about, you know, like I said, a lot of it, there's not a lot of flexibility in what that timeline looks like, right? So it's about five months and there's not much you can do about that. I mean, some, you can spread it out longer, but I mean, you're probably about this, like everything has to go perfect, right? In order for this to work to this timeline. If it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't, then obviously like we would have to do this starting over again. But for everything to work, then it can work.
And do you see like if we're like three months off, you definitely have these situations where you hire someone or appoint someone, or if you start?
So some of that will depend, like so for you to have an acting, you know, that permanent, like if, say, Dr. Angelilo's gone and now you have that seat is open and you have an acting, that would be up to the county superintendent would have to approve that you can do that because that's not in writing, that's not what it says, how it would work. But they have been making exceptions to that. So you would have to get their approval to make that exception.
So for acting, you're asking for an acting or an interim?
An interim is usually like, yeah, like a retired. And so, you know, when some of them are like happy, they only want a short-term assignment. Some of them are like, well, you know, if you're not going to take me for a year, then then I don't want to, you know, so you'll have that as well when you're searching, you know, should you find yourself in the situation where you need an interim? That, you know, those will be things that they'll kind of want to know, well, how long do you need me for?
So it's possible in like August, why would be thinking what to do if you're not?
Typically, just how long does that take to find an interim? Because now you're already in the process of trying to find actual, and now you can use an interim. So hopefully you don't go there. But is that like a two weeks thing or is that like a several month long?
It really, I mean, it's kind of like.
Like there are lists somewhere?
Yes, like we, yes, we have a list and the ASA has a list. You know, they will tell you the areas that they're interested in working in and then you just kind of. You guys are going to have a busy summer or busy spring here, so no vacations for anybody. Any, any other questions?
I have, what I, in our school, it's literally meaningful rule. Is there any special considerations that we should add if we're searching?
No, I mean, it'll just be important that it's advertised clearly that way so that when the people apply, they understand that they are applying to fill both of those roles. So, you know, that's just, we just have to make it clear that that's what, this is what the job.
I assume it narrows our pool if we make that point.
I mean, it narrows the pool, but it's also, people are going to see this as their first time. Like you might be like, you'll attract, sometimes like the K to eight pools are actually a lot of times larger than the K to twelve pools, just because a lot of people are now seeing that this is their first time opportunity. And there's sometimes a lot of good people out there just waiting for, you know, someone, you know, waiting for that next chance. And for a lot of people, you're that next chance for them.
Thank you very, very much for a very informative presentation.
Congratulations again on your certified board lead.
Thank you very much.
...................................................
Lauren Pascual, just can I talk to what, to the presentation? Is that part of the agenda? Well, I mean, it's actually just a question that they might be able to answer. There's been recently legislation that's being proposed to, on the New Jersey state level, but I'm not sure if that affects this district at all. It's titled, and maybe it's just, again, "New Jersey Schools Too Top Heavy As Bill Seeks To Limit Number Of Principals And Superintendents." I don't know, are you familiar with that bill that's being proposed and does that have any kind of effect on this district?
So I saw that same article in that same headline and I'm like, what is this? So then when I went.
Is that what you're going to ask?
Uh, defer to.
So it's actually two years old of legislation. And when you go to the legislation website, it says that that bill died in January.
Okay, that's, the article did not say that.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, anyone else want to address the board on any matter? Yes.
Heather LaBarre, is that what you're saying my address to?
Technically, yes.
Ah, twenty-eight, that'll work for him. Heather LaBarre. So how can the public reasonably expect to be, receive communications about various stakeholder engagements? So should the board at some point decide to do a survey or a listening session or anything like that? How would the public, especially the public who doesn't have children in the school, become aware of that? And do you have a method of which we can look out for?
Whichever consultant we hire, we will absolutely work with that consultant to identify any and all ways that we can, can do that. And we've just had recent experience with other, other matters that reach the entire community, so we'll certainly, we'll, you know, we use our own knowledge, recent knowledge of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to address the board? Yes.
Brendan Elers, three thirty-seven Powerville Road. She mentioned the, the time of giving notice for someone that we'd be hiring to their school district. Presumably that also went the other way with Dr. Angelilo. Is there a timeframe that he is still under contract for? And my second question was regarding the idea of an acting superintendent. She mentioned that there were minimum requirements for someone being an acting superintendent. Do we have knowledge of someone already in the district on the staff that meets those requirements, that that's an option? Or is that not even on the table because we don't have anyone that meets?
Yeah, we're not, we're not anywhere near that, that point yet. And I guess if we run out of time, whether we decide to delay the process or start out, there is the chance that there still may be a gap in time where like if someone has, you know, we identify the perfect person and they have their notice, brings them out beyond when Dr. Angelilo, you know, is contractually released from here, we would have to consider appointing an acting or an interim superintendent, you know, before that date because you always have to have someone in that position. So, but for, before that, that'll be, we'll be discussing all those items as we move forward. And I guess in answer to the first question, contractually, somewhere in mid-August, you know, early in August, this, Dr. Angelilo is eventually the last one. Yes?
Amelia Mdean, twelve Hillcrest Road. I think Charlie Peterson did a really great job of stressing the importance of stakeholder involvement and talking to the community. And as a CPAD parent, I'm just going to read something that I've already sent, but just for the general public. So the CPAD would like to thank you for the active collaboration between the BOE and the CPAD over the past year and a half. At this time, we have gained a liaison and as a result are included in many board meetings. This collaboration has not gone unnoticed by the CPAD parents. We are thankful for your support. We also have a strong relationship with administration. We have three meetings per year with district administration and these meetings are an opportunity for school administration and CPAD parents to share ideas and advance the special education programming at Rockaway Valley School. As the board begins the search for a new superintendent, we would like you to remember that we are active stakeholders in this school community. CPAD parents are passionate about advancing the special education services at RBS, which in turn lead to a better education for all. The search for a superintendent is an endeavor for the entire community and we look forward to participating and providing valuable insight. We look forward to our ongoing collaboration with this board and building a solid relationship with the administration.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. Really appreciate that. Thank you. And I guess moving forward, you have a unique, you know, place where you collaborate with our administration as well as us. So, you know, certainly you'll be part of the outreach, you know, any community outreach that we do with whatever consultant that we engage with. And I thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for the board on any matter? Yes. Hello?
Address is a London Valley Road, I think. The, the, first, I wanted to introduce ourselves to, to everyone, you know, it's probably not as sick for most of you. We've been meeting come to board meetings for the last two months and with everything. We've just tried to find the right time, so now's the time. The, I've been, my name's Lad Turner. I've been at Rockaway Valley School for seventeen years now, a few years shorter than Lauren. And we've had the honor of representing the staff, the teachers, paraprofessionals, nurse, custodians for almost most of the last twelve years. And we wanted to, as part of our goals this year, to open up more lines of communication. Usually you'll see some of our reps at the board meetings, so we're trying to open up a little bit more communication with the board. We have monthly meetings with the administration. We have open lines of communication with our staff, of course, and our people. And we're trying to extend it to the board this year and be a little bit more present and let you know that we're always willing to talk, chat, be open for conversation, communication, all that. I started here about seventeen years ago and one thing that's as true then as it is today is the support of the community. I was told in sort of private school and public school setting, it's been absolutely true going on seventeen years. I know the people who work here feel the support of the staff, I'm sorry, of the community, of the parents, of the students, of the board. And, and it's, it's really been a pleasure working at conferences where last week and we had a great time, a lot of great feedback. I've heard from staff throughout the building that everything went great, the communications prepared were great. So communication is our key, has been our key. So first, welcome to the new board members this year and we're hoping to see more again and have a more active voice here in there. So thank you very, thank you very much.
I just want to add just one thing. Lauren Savage, when I don't live with Lad at Eleven Valley Road, I live at eighty-six Hill Street in Booton. I've been here twenty years. I've taught almost every grade in this school. I'm proud to be a staff member here. We feel very passionate about this school and we're excited to be part of this stakeholder committee as we move forward. Lad and I have represented the staff here for approximately ten years, so we really feel like we have the, our finger on the pulse of what our staff wants and needs. So we're looking forward to working with all of you in the future.
Thank you very much to both of you. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? Any matter with the board? If not, at this time, we're going to have entertaining motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss issues that board confidentiality has permitted to open the public in the SEC, chapter two thirty-one of the laws of nineteen seventy-five. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reconvenes, they will be made public without confidential subject or warranted. They may be, uh, contractual matters. We may take action when the board reconvenes, you know, perhaps to engage a consultant to, you know, begin our superintendent search, but we may or may not. So if you wish to stay around, please slip in wait, I guess, the lobby. And, you know, thank you for coming. I would like, so at this time, we have returned from closed session. It is eight fifty-three, yep. And at this time, we have a, we have on the agenda personnel motion number one.
Would you be B first or do we have to do personnel one? You get to be B.
I would do personnel motion one first.
Okay, okay.
Question or?
You have to do a motion a second, then you can open for discussion.
Okay.
I'll move. Personnel.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments that we can discuss in COVID setting?
Yeah.
There's none.
I want to discuss adding at the end of PR one after if possible by the board. Just to clarify.
Is that assumed because these are only a blue?
Would this be it open?
Or?
No. There's a motion a second on the floor. You can modify that if it doesn't really change the.
To me, it's how much by the board, earlier by the board. Yeah, that, that the qualification, that the decision of a time to be staffed earlier if possible rests on the board.
So would you say after earlier by the board comma if possible?
Yes.
Before if possible?
Yes.
So where are you putting that?
Before the comma, after earlier, the last sentence, the last line.
Before, okay. If earlier by the board.
If possible.
If possible.
Comma.
Yeah, just so that it's clear that that decision is, okay, rests on the board and not, you know, everybody's in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, so you need a motion and a second, so vote on that amendment.
So we have, Mr. Chen has a motion to amend, motion personnel one, which is to add the wording that he suggested. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And are there any questions or comments on that modification? If not, the question is on the adoption of Mr. Chen's motion to amend personnel motion number one to include the language established earlier by the board. That will read, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no.
No, 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 you're just doing the amendment.
Okay.
So you're doing the amendment. Everybody's in agreement with that?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, a motion's on the table, personnel motion number one is on the table as amended. Any other questions, comments or discussion on that motion? Okay, if not, the question is on the adoption of personnel motion number one as amended. This is a roll. Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
This is Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Nwiccan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is board business motion number one. Any available motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, comments or discussion on that?
This is a seven thousand dollar.
Yeah, they gotta read the motion.
Just make sure you agree with me.
And not so. So the motion is second on the floor for EBO.
And this is a motion to approve the New Jersey School Wars Association for Superintendent Search Services at a fee of seven thousand dollars. Okay, so any other questions, comments or discussion? If not, the question is on the adoption of board business motion number one. This is also a roll. Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
This is Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Nwiccan?
Yes.
Motion carries.